Chairman, keep all cell phones off when I vibrate, please remain standing for clear and the flag will apply.
I'll call the Warren County Commission meeting order and I'll turn it over to Mr. Stevie Glenn for our invocation.
We have Justin Reed with us tonight, he's the preacher at Arlington Church of Christ, and at this time we'll ask him to lead our prayer.
Would you pray with me? Our merciful heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this wonderful day, for the sunshine, the beautiful weather, the opportunity to get out and earn a living today and then come together tonight to work on keeping our county wonderful and improving in the ways that we may need it. We're so thankful for every blessing, we know everything comes from thee, we're thankful for the avenue of prayer that we can lift up those that are hurting, we know there are many sick among our communities and our own local families, we pray that those that are sick may be healthy soon. We also ask you be with those that are caring for them, the doctors, nurses, and caregivers, may they see the ill be whole soon. We're so thankful that we live in the greatest country, that we know freedom is not free, and we know she has her problems, but still the greatest place on earth to live. We pray that we will never take that for granted, but always live each day to the fullest. We're thankful for the brave men and women who are fighting this very moment to keep us free. Ultimately heavenly Father, we're thankful for the great sacrifice of thy son Jesus Christ to come to this low land of sin and sorrow, to live as a man, to die upon the cross for the forgiveness of our sins. At this time we ask you forgive us of anything amiss in our lives, we ask everything that we do in accordance with thy will, through Jesus Christ's name we do pray. Amen.
I'll now turn it over to Michael Bell for the pledge of allegiance.
This time I will ask Norman after coming to podium one, we'll read something about Norman.
Norman is an Army veteran of the Vietnam War, he's active member of the American Legion Post 173, he's active member of the Vietnam Veterans Post 1112, he's a member of the Singer Center, he's a lifelong member of Newtown, the Baptist Church, where he serves as a deacon, and he says he's been a long life bench driver in the 7th District. This time I will ask Norman to lead us in, pledge allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I will now ask the clerk to call the roll.
Michael Bell.
Here.
Carl Bolden.
Here.
Carleen Brown.
Here.
Charles Dotson.
Here.
Randy England.
Here.
Steve Glenn.
Here.
Stephen Hilton.
Here.
Brad Hillis.
Here.
James Hines.
Here.
Scott Kelly.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Kenny Moffett.
Here.
Cam Montgomery.
Here.
Casey Owens.
Here.
Gary Prater.
Chris Rippey. Kristy Ross.
Here.
Scott Rubbley.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Donna Smith.
Here.
Philip Stout.
Here.
Cole Taylor.
Here.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Here.
Twenty-two present.
Twenty-two present. We'll move on to the adoption of our docket, do I hear motion? I'm not motion. A motion of Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Stout. Any additions or corrections to our document?
Mr. Chairman, if, commissioners if you will look in your packet, you'll have a amendment on your desk that is GFFY 2425-4, there is already a 24-25-4 in your packet, this one has been updated and there's been some funding added, and what we would like to do is replace the one in the packet with this one and remove the one from the packet, and I put that in form of motion.
Got a second, Mr. Taylor, any questions? All those in favor of replacing the one we've got with a new one, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, now we're back on the original docket. All those in favor of approving our docket for tonight, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we have now approved our docket for tonight, if anybody has any public comment, they'll sign up to Mr. Hillis, I don't think, it's on the docket tonight, we'll come back to that, now we'll move on to the reading of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we sent the minutes read and decline the reading of them.
We've got a motion and a second by Mr. Savage, there's no more addition or correction of the minutes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. We'll move on to our elected official departmental reports, we'll start with Warren County Sanitation, Mr. Josh Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the court, you have a copy of my report, I'll try to answer any questions at this time.
Move to approve. Got a motion by Mr. Lee, a second by Mr. Glenn, any questions about?
I have a question. In your reports, you, all three months, you're, as before, you're continuing to have no hauls to waste away until the very last month, do they, do you just keep it gathered up until it's time to take it, or how, what is your relationship now with Waste Away?
So how that works, they will call us when they're needing a load, and a lot of times they're just testing the equipment, and as far as I know, right now they don't have a whole lot going on, they're just testing equipment.
So it could go six months or just one month?
Yeah, we might have one load all year, as far as I know, I've not been guaranteed none.
Okay, and then the other two items on there that still doesn't have a place to go is plastic and electronics.
So we have the electronics going to Knoxville, and they're coming down to Warren County and picking them up for free, it's not costing us nothing. The plastic is being landfillated at this time.
Is being what?
It's being landfillated. It's not, the only thing in Warren County that can be recycled right now that's going to a landfill is the plastic, and the reason being, we can't bail the material, we've got, we've not got a baler, we don't have a building to process it. Coming forward with some grant money, if it was to come available, we could apply for that, maybe get a building and a baler, and at that time we would process that material.
What are the other counties around us doing?
A lot of the smaller rural counties are doing about the same thing we're doing, a little bit of the larger Putnam County, stuff, Rufford County, they're bailing their plastic.
What would a building and a baler for plastic cost?
The last baler, the top of the line baler, that we quoted was about $3.85 for just the baler, the building, you're probably looking at $125,000. There is a large grant coming this year for a building and a baler through the state, it would have a 20% match that we could look into.
Well, I hope we sure do that, and...
The only problem with the plastic recycling that I'm running through ain't there's seven different kinds of plastic, Josh? It's very hard, I've talked with, like, Putnam County, and they're running a full recycling center, they have their own baler, and it is hard for them to keep people interested in taking the material even after it's processed. The cardboard, the electronics, the oil, all that is very simple and easy to recycle, but the plastic is very hard, and even the larger counties is having trouble finding somebody to even take it and not being paid for it. And I'm not saying that there's not a market for it, but the market is up and down with plastic, where cardboard, you know, it's holding around $100 a ton, plastic, you might go three months and they pay you $25 a ton, and then they might charge you $45 a ton to even accept it. It's just a hard market to be in, and the terrorists, a couple of years ago, the terrorists, when they come in, that's what really hurt that market from my understanding.
Has Waste Away ever asked you for plastic to do a test?
They've never taken just plastic, it's solid waste bag garbage.
My last question, your recycling percentage?
Yes.
Are we good? I can't remember what you said it was supposed to be.
We are, we could do a little better job, but a lot of the businesses here in Warren County, Bridgestown, Rose Oak, they really helped pull that number up at the end of the year for our annual progress report, so right now we're really good with the businesses in Warren County. Now, when you look at just the sanitation department, we're on the low side, I'll be honest, we could do a little bit better job giving grants for the rural county to be able to do something, we can't afford to go out and do it because it will never pay for itself, but with a grant, I feel like we can up them numbers going forward. It's really hard recycling, it's hard, I understand we gotta do it, you know, we're withheld to do 25% as of right now, the state's looking to rewrite the 1991 solid waste that, so we don't know what's coming down, we've heard some 50%, we've heard, we've heard some numbers, but we're gonna get a little bit more information later in the week at our solid waste meeting in Gatlinburg this week, so we'll know a little bit more about that, they're supposed to have a presentation Thursday to bring the counties up to speed on some of that. Hope I answered your questions, it's good questions. Yes, sir.
That baler, would that also be able to be used for the cardboard so we can start, that same baler could be used for both?
Yeah.
And the advantage of...
And you don't have to have that expensive of a baler.
And the advantage of bailing our cardboard is it actually makes it higher value as well, right?
Right now we're getting paid 35 a ton for cardboard, if we bailed it, it would be $125 a ton, and they would come pick it up, we wouldn't have no transportation cost in that, it would be good for the county, but I feel like we gotta do it through a grant. Any more questions?
Josh.
Yes, sir.
I spoke with you about the progress on the spot out there at Morrison, could you speak to that?
Yes, so I'm happy to tell you, Carl, we finally got back started, we've got all the base rock down, we've got all the utilities laid, started blue topping just a little bit last Friday, got one small section, and we are writing RFP to go out to bid for the paving on that side, and we got a state grant to pave the fairgrounds in town, so we're gonna go out to bid on both of those locations. So we are working on it, bear with us, we're doing it 95% in-house, everything's being done.
Someone asked you about it, I don't know who it called.
Well, we have, I mean, we've got a lot going on throughout the county, and we can't spend, if we could go out there and spend a month or two, it'd be done, it's hard to pull, to do that. Up at the fairgrounds, we went up and we laid out a 12 by 52 pad, and we'll start processing garbage at the A and L fire in a compactor and not front loads, so right now we're going up like twice a day during the fire to run a front load truck for garbage, this might go three days, so we're gonna lower the transportation costs, and it's gonna be a lot more user-friendly for the people coming up and not having to throw over five foot up there, this is about 40 inches off the ground, so I feel like it'll be a win-win. Any males have any more questions for Josh? If not, I've got a motion, a second, all those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, thank you, Josh. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the director of schools, Mr. Grant Swan.
Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for letting me be here, before you make a joke, I had to have my cellphone put away. I have included a copy of a report from Warren County Schools, be happy to answer any questions you have.
Got a motion, Mr. Stout, got a second by Mr. Hillis, to approve, any questions for Mr. Swan.
How's the cellphone issue going?
Well, we've had our bumps, and anytime you take on something that large, it's gonna be an uphill battle, but I think people are getting there, they're starting to see they can live without them, and had several positive comments from students, and two weeks in, we're very encouraged with where we are.
How is the mowing going?
Just like everybody else's.
Any more questions? All those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, we'll move on to the Warren County Sheriff's Department, Jack and Clay.
Good evening, everyone, you have my report, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those for you.
Motion, no proof.
Got a motion, a second, second by Mr. Johnson, any questions, Mr. Libia, all the people, may none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, we'll move on to Mr. Glenn, the highway department report.
Ladies and gentlemen, of course you have my time, but if there's any questions, I'll answer them. Why don't you go first?
Motion by Donna, a second by Brad, any questions about the report?
I'll have one.
Yes.
I guess this is gonna be my night because I got another one down here too. I want to know if you're paving any roads in the county right now?
Not right now, I've talked to the contractor, and we're gonna be trying to get some ready a little bit later on to pave.
How late is later on, because you know what happens when it gets cold?
Well, we've paved from up to October most of the time, sometimes in November, P-Dot's kinda got a bigger wind than now that you can do paving, and, but I have talked with my contractor, and the first time kid caught up on the mine, and of course the flood, May 8, so it's fine, and, you know, the highway department has weather things that can throw your regular schedule behind, and, but, you know, we do have money in there to pave with, and we're gonna try to pave some roads, and start later on this year, and then next year you can start as early as April and start paving before your budget's up in June 30. It don't take long to lay hot mix and use up a little bit of money, it's pretty inventive.
I just want to say thank you, lady, for getting out there and getting that dust off the side of the road.
You're welcome, we still got some more to pick up, but we're, we're gonna get it out by then, thank you.
Mr. Libia, I would appreciate, I guess, a little bit of federal report as far as in our packet than what we've been getting, you know, from the sheriff's office, we get how many gallons of fuel they've used, that we get, all kinds of calls at the on through the sanitation, we get how much they tip and stuff, and I just, I'd like to see a better report come through from you, just like what she said here, as far as roads that are gonna be paved, you know, where we're mowing at currently, stuff of that nature, because, you know, I've gotten calls about mowing in our county, our own mine in the county, and I'm sure, I know you're mowing, you mow every day, I just don't know where you're mowing at, I don't know what in the county you're on or anything of that nature, so I would appreciate that in the future, it's just having some better report so that we can actually, you know, tell people what's going on in the county, thank you.
Yes, I mean, our office is open, and sometimes it's hard to know exactly what's gonna be going on, but we have three crews, and they mow the same section every, every year, and the weather and depends on how long it takes them to make around, but we're on, starting our third mine right now, and of course sometimes when you have a growing season and a lot of rain, E. Johnson grass going growth quicker, you know, we can't really keep it looking like a yard, but we do work, and we work overtime, and they try to do a good job, and, you know, a lot of different moving parts of the highway department, and, you know, district report we've been given for probably 25 years, and we stay within our budget and always keep a good fund balance, it's all about managing your money, what you get, and we try to do work all over the county, countywide, and take care of the money and not ask for rate for more tax money, anything we buy, anything we do, we try to do it in-house in our own budget, imagine for what we get, and still give the taxpayers, you know, paved roads and keep them mowed, and snow and ice, and 911 calls, I take all 911 calls, so now 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, so we've got good work crews, they do a good job, they got a good attitude, and I appreciate them, and that's I said to the county, but we'll, we'll look into this, I'll have a highway and bridge committee, and a finance management committee, you know, we'll look into it, I've got, I've got nothing to hide, so thank you very much for asking, Steve, anybody else got a question?
Any more questions? All those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to the financial report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you all have your report, if I have any questions, I'll do my best to answer at this time.
What did you say?
Got a motion, Mr. Rubbley, second by Mr. Glenn, any questions about financial report? All those in favor approving the financial report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. We'll move on to our committee reports now, we'll start with motion finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, budget, finance, and nothing to report at this time.
Move on to building and grounds?
Building and grounds has, just a couple of things to report, they was working on the sign at the mall today when I drove by, so that's in process, and we had, we sent the specs out for beds on a new sewer up next at the jail, they thought we had a report this time.
All right, thank you, move on to economic, matter of... All right, thank you. We'll move on to economic and agriculture.
This is my last one. Um, I don't even know if Michael could answer this, but I know that you could, or Jason could. There's two grants that we've been talking about. There are, you, for sure, I know you know what I was talking about. And that was the kayak entrances. Um, and I wanted to know what the status of that is and if we're going forward with it at Rocket Park and possibly Shell Ford. And then the other thing is I heard we were looking at a grant for pickleball courts at the mall. And I was wondering if that is moving forward.
Uh, we've heard there's some issue with the grants that y'all approved or we could actually, actually it was Myers Co.
Myers, okay.
We're trying to fix. You have to own the property to actually qualify for that grant. And TWRA right now is in possession of that. So we weren't able to fill out for that. And that's about the pickleball court. We run into a little problem with that. We couldn't get enough courts in the mall. We need to have enough to be a tournament facility to get them. So that's what the state wants. And they just don't want one or two pickleball courts. It's enough to where you can handle tournaments, which really needs to be five or more courts. So we didn't have any spaces big enough to fill that. We did look into that situation. That's the, when we're at, of course, the Rocket Park grant will be coming through the city because that is their property.
I think they got approved. Yeah, I think the Rocket Park, they're gonna do a lot down there.
Well, but they're still, that's a competitive grant. So they may get it or they may not. All those were competitive grants. They'll speak, what, Jason, twenty-three?
Yes. I think they got a nap last week. Uh, the deadline, they're turning it in until the twenty-third of August. Oh, they got something last week.
Okay, well, I'm unaware, I'm unaware of that. The one we were talking about trying to, to the deadline is, this week, so.
Someone, uh, Morris called about when we get done, but I'll be there.
Yeah, because we don't have the, we weren't able-
They will lease it or anyone give it to us, make some work?
Well, the time, I love Jason explaining it a little bit.
We can possibly lease ground from him to get that transferred over in time for the twenty-third deadline, which is the end of this week. Just wasn't gonna happen. And the only other asset that's not a office building or ambulance or jail is the mall and we just don't have a, that's where the pickleball, we went down that rabbit hole. And we just don't have enough, big enough space. Even if we combined, uh, for example, shoe sensation and Cagum, there was some discussion. I think, uh, Commissioner Ritchie and some other folks had mentioned combining that. Still not big enough to get enough courts in for it to be considered tourism. And that's not, I think, that involves not good for the community, but it has to be a tournament venue. And the state has standards, what they consider to be tur- tournament size of the number of courts for it to be tourist-related. We couldn't qualify. There's no way we could, we just didn't have enough space.
In the meeting, we had talked about Shell Ford a little bit and we talked about that they made a big more extensive work. Who owns that property?
The, the-
TWRA.
They own it too. So do they own all of the grounds?
They own the ones in the county for sure. That is Myers Co., Shell's Ford, and-
What?
Urble's Landing, which is considered, uh, double three.
River Bridge.
It's River Bridge, but it's a lot-
They have a lease on it.
Yeah, that would be a lot of water department action. I'm just like, they belong to me at that.
They own it in TWRA. The lease is from the water department on the lock bin, because they're watering under that bridge.
Yeah.
And they had no, but it's, it's just for Myers Co. It's not something that we can do, it's just something we could do before this deadline. And those conversations are still ongoing for the future, but, you know, we, sometimes it don't work out that we get every grant that we can apply forward. We didn't know enough about it quick enough either, uh, through the tourism award, uh, where we joined in the scene, which is, I think everybody's saying that. But it was on that. So what, what the future of that is, probably something that dispositions, we'll have to take on on our own. It's something for y'all to consider in the future. But right now, that tourism, that's my grant we had to pass by.
Okay, thank you.
So the one that she was asking about Rocket Park, that comes through the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. And it was for a hundred fifteen thousand dollars.
All right, that's not the tourism grant. Tourism grant is a hundred thousand dollar max.
That grant that Mike was speaking of is to actually do the ramp itself. Their tourism grant that they've applied for would be to upgrade the parking area to the actual concrete ramp that goes in the water. Two separate, it's one location, but two separate projects, two separate grants all happen simultaneously if they get awarded that.
All right, any more questions? If not, we'll move on to economic airport.
In case Carlene's got any more questions, I'm a little nervous. All jokes aside, we're, we have a couple of things tonight that's coming in front of the, uh, full court. And the third Saturday, remember this, the third Saturday of every month, they have a breakfast and they have a fly-in at the airport. And, uh, they had about eighty people this Saturday. It's just started. This is about the third or fourth one. And, uh, if you can, go, uh, and support that. They're trying to bring more awareness. There's quite a bit of stuff going on about bringing some schooling and education into the high school and stuff, uh, through the airport and stuff. It, uh, they've got a lot going on toward educating the young folks and stuff. And that'll be, as it progresses, we'll let you know more about it. Uh, our next meeting will be the first Tuesday of next month. It'll be September the third at five o'clock. Um, I think that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Do they have any questions? Education, Mr. Swan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met last week, August thirteenth, with Dr. Swallows and got an update on the new policies for this year. Our next meeting will be September twenty-third at four P.M. at the central office.
All right, any questions? Thank you. We'll move on to financial management. Financial management has nothing to report at this time. So we'll move on to health and welfare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing at this time. I was asked earlier. I've had an update on the, the plumbing. Uh, we have a lot of the money for that.
We should be getting some ground here in a week or so, so we can put that, that project in. We have raised twenty-six hundred and eighty dollars for the spade and uter program to get that started off. And there'll be a budget amendment that's come out of health and welfare next month for five thousand donation money. We'll put them all together. We'll update the actual total money raised and have that, where we go use that after next month. Have a report on that. Uh, Randy, Highway and Bridge Gary is sitting with a colleague and called and said he wouldn't be here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it's, several tenant Glenn, uh, mentioned a while ago, they're trying to get their, we're getting our cuttings in. We're kinda hoping this will be the last round that we make. Of course, like he said, the Johnsons' are asking, girl, and one thing that we don't wanna talk about, but we have got salt on order. Y'all believe it's gonna be that time? So we'll get our allotted amount of salt, but everything's going good at the Highway and Bridge Department and they're doing a great job.
Uh, policy personally, Mr. Stoudt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met on the thirteenth last Tuesday. And we got reports from the codes department and the judicial commissioners and both of them have been really busy, uh, both departments have. And they're doing a good job. Uh, and the only other thing that we discussed was one of the resolutions that's on the agenda tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll move on to safety. Ron Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, don't have a whole lot to report, but the ambulance that took two and a half years to get, we're in the process of getting radios and getting this stocked up to where we can use it. So thank goodness for that.
Uh, county correctional partnership?
Uh, today's population at the jail is, uh, two sixty-nine. Uh, two eleven of those are male. Uh, fifty-eight, uh, is female. Uh, Tennessee Department of Corrections has eleven inmates, uh, there, with ten of them being male. Uh, convicted misdemeanors, we have eighty. Uh, we're gonna probably have a meeting next week. I'll be looking for that, everybody in the committee, and I will set that.
Uh, Liz Flay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, last week, I sent out an email about the TCCA regional meetings that we have coming up. Uh, the one closest to us is in Putnam County. It's on September the twenty-sixth at five-thirty in Leslie Town Square. I need, um, anyone that is planning to attend to reply through email so I can get that head count to Mr. Curris. Thank you.
Can you figure out what the, how it was gonna be on that yet?
He hasn't shared that with me yet, but it will be credited hours.
All right, we'll move on to our committee reports to, we have any public comment? No public comment tonight? We'll move on to new business, amendment number one, G F F Y twenty-four twenty-five dash two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a correction to the sheriff and jail budgets. Um, there was some miscommunication and, uh, I think a reporting error, uh, during the raise calculations for the sheriff's department, uh, back during the budget. Uh, this is to institute the raises that were approved but left out.
Motion approved.
Got a motion, Mr. Johnson? Second. Second, Mr. Heaven. Any questions about the amendment? Any more questions? I'll ask one, Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Golden?
Yes.
Carlene Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Rod Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yeah.
Philip Stoudt?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Any one more change your vote?
Amendment number one passes twenty-two to zero. We'll move on to amendment number two, G F F Y twenty-four twenty-five, pass three, Mr. Cop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is another amendment for the sheriff's department. However, this one is grant funding, um, the Toledo grant, uh, cost share, sorry, the Toledo cost sharing grant with the state. Um, this is reimbursement for expenses, uh, excuse me, this is payment for expenses incurred when every time we send a new officer to the academy. We have already received thirty-six thousand dollars of the forty that were allotted for you.
Motion, Mr. Stoudt?
Second.
Second, Mr. Ruble. Any questions about the amendment? Any none? I'll ask one, Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Golden?
Yes.
Carlene Brown?
Yes.
Charles Dodson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Rod Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stoudt?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Any one more change your vote?
Item number two passes twenty-two to zero. We'll move on to item number three. I sent you out an informational e-mail about what the, uh, budget amendment, G F F Y twenty-four twenty-five four is. We've got a chance, I guess, Mr. Ruble, if you want to stand up and look at it.
Yes, sir. What this is originally, we only had the, the house included. We were still negotiating on the price on, uh, the fuel station over here. Just located off bypass behind what most people know as corner market. But we had finally come to an agreement on, on price on that, and that is the reason for the addition of the, of the, uh, the new money. Uh, the original price for the house is two hundred and twelve thousand, a hundred and eighty thousand for the fuel station. And there's eighty, uh, there are eight thousand dollars additional added in there for environmental studies to make sure that everything's on the up and up. And, uh, this passed budget finance and financial management unanimously and I saw.
A motion, a second one, Mr. Taylor. Uh, I do want you to know on the fuel station that the environmental's come back bad and we're not obligated to anything. That's, that's the way we've made the deal on the fuel station. And this is for the property next to us to expand, uh, park the lot and to buy the fuel station.
Could I ask, what's, what's the purpose in the fuel station?
Fuel station is somewhere we can buy fuel at wholesale. So just like the sheriff's department will be able to get their fuel, we won't mark it up in the school system. Everybody will be able to save that percentage that this fuel's marked up, you know, order tractor trailer loads at the time. And, uh, actually save those departments, yes.
Sir, are we voting on both things in one? Why are they not separated?
But they're both coming out of the general fund, but if you will look at the bottom of the page, we have got those separated in the notes at the bottom.
I'm sorry, what note?
Uh, if you look at the bottom of the amendment, it says appropriate two hundred and twelve thousand to purchase property at Locust Street and then one eighty-eight, uh, for the fuel station. Which it doesn't specify a fuel station. It says one oh seven, Field Street.
Oh, I didn't wear my glasses.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if you would, uh, explain what we think the payout period will be on this in savings.
We're hoping with, uh, that we should be about five years on the payout on the fuel station. It will take another seventy-seven thousand dollars to finish the fuel station, to get it where we will have digital recording sent over here through the internet and digital monitoring of the card system that's open there. But we're hoping the payout will be somewhere around five years of the schools is, uh, we've asked them to come on board. So they will get those savings, that fuel. So we're hoping, like I say, that we can speed that up. The more departments we can get to use it, the faster we can have the payout.
Terry, we might explain to everyone, too, that the card system will be monitored and it will, it will prevent abuse. It will also be videoed, uh-
We will, we're, that's the reason we'll save, but we're looking at coming to you next month and asking you for that, if the environmental's go through. The reason we've not added that in, the environmental's, we're gonna make sure everything's good before we're appropriating money for that. But, uh, we're looking to put in a security system where we'll be able to record and then you, the brand new card system that pumps to where that we will be able to, when they pull up, fill up, it'll enter their mileage, it'll enter who, which department bought that and translate that flow over here to building or just, we can break that down and take it out of each department's budget. And hopefully, like I say, we'll have those savings by being wholesale.
I like Commissioner Owens, uh, have reservation about voting on both of these at the same time. I would actually like to split them apart. Uh, one reason is I'm totally for buying the home. Uh, I feel like that's gonna be an asset, uh, to the county. And I feel like it makes sense. You know, we're landlocked here and, and you just don't get property right adjacent to you. So I'm a hundred percent for that, uh, at this point. Um, I do have reservations on the fuel, uh, just because of the environmental and the fuel savings that we're gonna get. You know, can we use fuel cards? And, and I actually had a, a conversation here with, uh, Commissioner Owens, uh, prior to, that led me to talk to some other people, uh, previous, uh, school board, uh, director. And, uh, whenever I was speaking to him, we used to have fuel at the bus, um, um, depot or whatever. And, uh, he told me, uh, that they removed that and ended up having to pay some environmental fees because of, of that. So it concerns me that the liability of us owning a fuel station, you know, the environmental and all that concerns me. And, and I'm just wondering if we've done enough due diligence, and maybe we have, 'cause I'm just now getting, uh, you know, to know about this. So ha- have we truly investigated that? I would be more apt for just giving the eight thousand dollars for the environmental study for tonight. And then next month, if everything comes back and we've had time to sort of investigate this, maybe investigate fuel cards, to come back and give the hundred and eighty for that. That, that's what I'm feeling. So a- at this time, I would like to make a motion that we vote on these two items separately and then maybe combine that. Is that, is that doable?
You can put the motion on the floor.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we split these up and vote on the house property first, uh, and then the, um, the, uh, fuel purchase, uh, fuel island second.
All right, you're out here a second. Got a second from us all. Is any discussion on that matter?
All we're doing tonight is appropriating money. We're up on a violent piece of property, the fuel island, till we get that, the, the environmental study back.
That's already the agreement.
That's already in the agreement. All we're doing is moving money in case that environmental study comes back.
Also, those tanks, uh, are being monitored now by a company. They're monitored for leaks and everything. And we would actually tie in with, we would have those tanks, they would be evaluated every month. Is that not correct, Terry?
Yeah, that, well, you'll be able to evaluate with a digital system.
They would be, they're monitored for having a leak or anything.
Ronnie, tell us a little about the tanks. They're glass-lined tanks. Yep.
Yep. These were top-of-the-line tanks put in a few years ago. They're fiberglass, they're steel tanks, fiberglass coated outside and inside. And and I know of one village down here back years ago, and of course, if you remember where village is at, it was a swamp. My dad and I buried them tanks originally. And so what you do, if you had to relight, had to replace a tank, you just, I doted a hole around and they made a manhole in top of it, and went down, sandblasted it and re-pigasst it, and you bolted, you know, bolted a manhole when you come out. He rebuilt it in ground. We didn't have to tear the building down to take the tanks. So I mean, they can be serviced if if a problem is. But the new system that Terry's talking about getting is is real, even better than the monitoring system that's there. So it'll be well monitored and then whoever, that takes care of that, and they do a good job.
Will you be bringing the environmental study to us to approve the final purchase, or do you, does this approve you to go ahead?
I don't approve the environmental study if there's any problem with it. But I mean, if you.
I just, I was just thinking it would make Stephen feel better if he was able to know about it, maybe.
Well, I mean, we could burn it in any committee.
Well, I mean, this is the first, I mean, we just brought this, we amended this. Sorry. We we just brought this in, we've amended the docket to buy a gas, a fuel station. I think it's something we need to talk about, and I'd like to do my due diligence to know that, you know, one idea that floated across from a state trooper that I just ate lunch or dinner with tonight, is why not get fuel cards and let the county employees fill up at all the different gas stations throughout the county? Now, I realize that there will be fuel savings.
That sort of beats the point of buying fuel wholesale. That be, that overrides the point of buying fuel wholesale.
Well, correct. I I realize the fuel savings, but if you only have one point that you can fill up, how many people are driving from all over the, where's, where are they driving from to get to that fuel station? If if they're burning fuel getting there, what's the fuel savings? I mean, how much are we talking about? Again, none of these numbers have been told to me. This just come across. That's the reason I've got questions.
All these departments are located right here centrally. The department says can get fuel there.
Most of them are getting them in one spot down at Mount Leo right now. As a matter of fact, you can, you can only buy fuel if you're a county from Mount Leo right now. That's the only place you can go. It doesn't matter where you, where your vehicle's located. We've got a feed with them right now. We're making it out.
Mr. Chairman, am I, was I wrong in, if we appropriate this money and you, and they do that study, if the tanks fail, we get our money back, correct?
Yes, exactly, yes. And and I do want to correct this. This is not just put on your desk. I sent out an email to everybody on Friday. If you checked your email, you've got an email with these pictures and exactly what we're doing, so you can call and ask any questions, because I didn't want you to think I just put something on your desk right now that hadn't been, you hadn't had a chance to look at.
My fault is I I failed to check my email over with you. My fault.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm not mistaken, Justin, we talked about it a little bit earlier. How many gallons of fuel did you figure out that we bought last year?
Just, I have a hundred forty-two thousand.
Hundred forty-two thousand gallons, correct?
Yeah.
To me, this is, I guess, owning a business and I use a lot of fuel, this is a no-brainer for me. I mean, personally, I would rather see us buy the fuel station as the house, but I'm a fan of that too. But to me, the fuel station is going to benefit the county and save the county more money over a period of time. That's just my opinion of it. I think it's a no-brainer.
All right, I've got a.
Have Justin explain to him what Stephen was talking about the state.
Uh, the fuel cards?
Yes.
Uh, the trouble with fuel cards is that they're, while they're they're less secure than a centralized purchasing because they open the county up to fraud from anyone who has one, if you could buy fuel anywhere at any time, there's there's no security to stop someone who, you know, is having a bad day, needs some fuel. Or, I mean, there's been several cases locally, like not here, but in a few counties, you know, radius where somebody stops and puts fuel on a spouse's vehicle. And if you don't have a central location that is monitored, that is being billed through, you know, a single vendor, it is an issue. Now, the state, state has controls for that, you know, they have a much larger financial staff than I have. But also, if they get caught, they get fired, and then they probably get a massive amount of that money taken out of their last check. But it's the, it's just a less secure option than either continuing what we're doing now or moving what we're doing now to in-house with the fuel out.
Mr. Chairman.
Just a quick question. As you mentioned, the school board, the county departments, is that going to be extended to the rescue squad and the volunteer fire departments that are also getting fuel at Mount Leo as well?
I would hope that we could, we could be able to, I've not asked Mr. Cotton what that would look like. There is some legality there, but I would hope we could be able to do that and to give them their fuel and cost too, because they're serving the county, but I don't know that actually.
Now, I know that we can negotiate set rates with other municipalities, other actual governmental entities. I would have to talk to the comptroller and legal to find out whether or not we can negotiate those rates for nonprofits. So that's something I would have to look into.
All right, I've got a motion, a second on the floor to vote on separately. All right, and we're going to pick one, we're voting on first, but we like the best.
No, that's what I was wondering. We're good. She never had that. We're good, we're good.
Do you want that?
We're good.
All right, all right. I've got a motion on the floor to vote on which one first.
House first.
The House first, and the fuel island second.
No.
No, you had to get.
What he done was to vote on them separate.
That's what I'm saying.
That was a amendment, a reasonable motion.
We're fixing to amend to do that, a motion to amend.
Yes.
To separate.
We're voting on this one.
Yeah, but, yeah, but we're not voting on it separate, though.
But I was hitting which one was going to be first. The amendment says the House will be first, and the fuel island will be second.
We're voting on his amendment. We're voting on his amendment.
Split them apart.
Yeah, yeah.
You're just wanting to split them apart. It don't matter how far.
Everybody understand what we're doing? Vote to split them apart. I'll ask clerk Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell.
No.
Carl Bolden.
No.
Carleen Brown.
No.
Charles Dodson.
No.
Randy England.
No.
Steve Lynn.
No.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
No.
James Hines.
No.
Scott Kelly.
No.
Rod Lee.
No.
Gary Martin.
No.
Kenny Moffitt.
No.
Cam Montgomery.
No.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
No.
Scott Ruble.
No.
Tommy Savage.
No.
Donna Smith.
No.
Philip Stout.
No.
Cole Taylor.
No.
Blaine Wiltshire.
No.
Any one more change your vote? Two yes, two no.
The amendment fails. Forty to two. We're now back on the original motion. But we don't forget, a lot of thousand dollars. Everybody ready to vote?
Mr. Chairman, one thing that you mentioned that we might want to mention is the fact that this is coming out of the general fund, but the the monitoring system and what, once we own the property, looks like we would be able to take that from 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 our existing bond that we got out already, and this wouldn't have to come, the additional money wouldn't have to come from the general fund.
Any questions? All right, I'll ask clerk Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Charles Dodson.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Lynn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
No.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Rod Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
No.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
One more change your vote? Two yes, two no.
We've got twenty yes and two no. So the budget amendment passes. We'll now move on to item number four. Mr. Christie Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago to discuss some legislature that came down from the state to reduce the deadline for notice of public meetings of more than any legislative body to forty-eight-hour minimum as per TCA code Title Eight, Chapter Forty-four, Part One. You should have a copy of that in front of you, and we're just accepting into our minutes and our rules what the state changed it to. If you need further reason as to why that might be necessary, Director Cotton can explain to you.
Is that the part of motion that Ross?
Yes, I put that in motion.
Second, Mr. Ross, a second on this. They're laying a channel over there. Right now, our our rule's actually for, say, three business days, which becomes hard to do sometimes. And there's things that comes up that we need to have a committee meeting centered in that. And that's all this to shorten the line. I'll ask clerk Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Charles Dodson.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Steve Lynn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Rod Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman. I've got skipped.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Casey Owens.
Yes.
Sorry.
Item four passes twenty-two to zero. We'll move on to item number five, Mr. Blaine Wiltshire.
Mr. Chairman, I'm having a problem finding finding this in my packet. Yeah, what this is, is an addition to the handbook we met with legislative committee and discussed, and actually health and welfare as well, and discussed to, as far as the fees for adoptions shall be waived for people who have fostered those animals for ninety days. That's a dog and a cat, and we wanted to have this reflected in our rules, and I so moved.
Put that on the floor. We've got a second, a second by Mr. Belling. Any questions about what we're doing? I'm going to push.
Commissioner Wiltshire, explain to me why that a dog cannot, or cat cannot be fostered longer than ninety days? What's the reason, Mike?
It's it's not a, there's not, it's not that they cannot be. A dog or a cat can be fostered for a year or more, but it's a psychological thing. You know, these these animals are, they get used to their environment, and so to change the environment, that's, sometimes it can cause them to go backwards and cause them to be unadoptable. And that's something that we see even in the shelter itself. A long period of time there can cause them to be unadoptable. So we want to try to keep that that part of the harm out of the out of the system so that they can be adopted.
Any more questions?
How many dogs and cats are fostered?
Uh, times we've had five.
Yeah, it it could be over thirty. It just depends. I'm sure it's been more than that before, but we've had times here in the last few years where we've had twenty-plus. So we'll ta, we'll take the help. If someone's willing to foster one, we'll take the help because it takes them out of the shelter.
Any more questions? All those in favor of the rule change, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That's unanimous. We'll move on to item number six, Mr. Thomas Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is resolution number twelve dash two oh two four. This is the building code's update. There's about seven or eight items on here. In order to be in compliance with the state regulations, we have to do this, and some of these are just changing one word, and then some of them, it was changing the whole thing. So to be compliant with the state, that's that's what they've told us we need to do. I'd like to put that in form of motion. I so moved.
I got a motion, a second for this. Carleen Brown, you may have any question about the building code amendment. It's been recommended to us by the state. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That's unanimous. We'll move on to item number seven, Mr. Carl Bolden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a nomination of Brett Henley to the airport committee. We have a opening, and it's been recommended by that committee that we nominate Brett Henley to fill that seat. It is a three-year seat, if I'm, I believe I'm correct, it's a three-year seat, and I put that in form of motion.
All right, we've got a motion. We've got a second by Mr. Hillis. All those in favor of the nomination, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passing unanimously. We'll move on to item number eight, Mr. Carl Bolden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next is a letter of on intent to withdraw from the ARC grant. This was a grant that we applied for actually several years ago for a maintenance building at the airport. The restrictions on having it bid out and everything were at the point, and the prices was changing. For a long time, we couldn't get anybody to bid on it, and now we have found that we can build it on our own cheaper, and we actually have the money to do it than we can through the grant. So, but we have to have a letter of intent to get out of this grant, and I, and we will, there will be some cost involved. We have to pay upper cumbre a little bit for their services. Justin can tell you how much that is, but I put that in form of motion also.
All right, I've got a motion, a second by Mr. Tommy Savage. Any questions about this? There is just no way that we've worked ever which way we can think of to try to make this grant work, and there's just no way to make it work. Anybody have any questions? I'll ask clerk Carl Rupp.
Michael Bell.
Yes.
Carl Bolden.
Yes.
Carleen Brown.
Yes.
Charles Dodson.
Yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Steve Lynn.
Yes.
Stephen Hilton.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
James Hines.
Yes.
Scott Kelly.
Yes.
Rod Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Kenny Moffitt.
Yes.
Cam Montgomery.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Christie Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Donna Smith.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-two yes.
Motion passes twenty-two to zero. We'll move on to the approval of notice.
This is list for the notaries. Kiefer Batterton, Arden Cummins, Shanna C. Hillis, Mara Holt, Deborah K. Link, Laura B. Smart, Tyra Y. Turner, Courtney Maynard, Chelsea West, Sherri McGinnis, Sue Anderson, Keith S. Smart, Tim Frye, Pamela G. Vaughn, and William L. Hatton.
Motion is approved. A second by Mr. Potato. All those in favor of approving the notice, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passing unanimously. And announcements coming out. You want to tell us about the fair coming up? Call on me?
Yeah, that's, that's not normal, you call on me. September the sixth to the fourteenth, everybody's got your fare books here. We're excited, of course, to have the seventh, this is our celebrating our seventieth year. Come out and support all of the local community organizations that's got food booths and different things. It's a huge fundraiser for them. We've also got a number of different entertainers coming. Our big entertainment will be Thursday night, Sammy Kershaw. We're excited about having him come in and entertain for a free show. We are the only, I think, the only free fair now in the state of Tennessee, so we should really celebrate that. Get out and tell all your relatives to come in, and it's a great event for everybody. Look forward to seeing you.
All right, Mr. Savage, you want to tell us about Relay for Life?
Yes, Relay for Life has changed their date. It used to be the first Saturday in June downtown. Now, it's going to be at the detention at the Old Morrison School. The, it will start at four o'clock. There will be a lot of games.[1771.61] There will be a lot of games, there will be the, uh, Survivor Walk, there'll be an auction, there's all kinds of good food, and, and go out there and, and see things like at Survivor Walk, and the money that is raised from Relay for Life through the American Cancer Society goes, most of it goes to cancer research. Listen, if, if anybody says all of that money doesn't help, don't ask Carleen Brown that. She'll tell you it does, yep. Ask Brian Kale, he'll tell you. But we would like to see everybody out there, see all of your constituents out there, and, and go out there and have a good time, spend some money for a good cause. Thank y'all.
What day, Tommy? You didn't say the day.
Saturday, four o'clock.
It's coming Saturday.
And we got a hold of a tournament, too.
It's Saturday.
Does anybody else have any more announcements? All right, we move on. I have a special presentation tonight. We've got a really special young lady with us here tonight. If Ms. Leah Kate Bailey would come to the podium there, I'm going to read this proclamation I'll be giving to her Saturday night. Honoring Miss Tennessee's Teen, Leah Kate Bailey. Whereas Leah Kate Bailey was recently crowned in Johnson City as Miss Tennessee's Teen twenty twenty-four, and whereas she advocates for our community service initiative, embrace our differences. After losing the use of her arm in an auto accident, she encourages others to rise above their obstacles they may face in life, and whereas she will be representing her hometown of Warren County in Tennessee as she competes for the title of Miss America Teen this coming June in Orlando, Florida. And whereas she has also won eight thousand dollars in scholarships fund, as well as receiving a full scholarship to the University of Alabama. Therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Terry Bell, County Executive, the legislative body[1707.36]